Pat White.
President.
Observing is Ms. Capoler, Ms. Gately.
Thank you.
That's it.
So, the agenda tonight is the policy manual. We have Dorothy Presser here from MAS C to kick off this process. My understanding is that Dorothy's gonna give an overview of what they've been working on to date, and some general questions about how the policies are gonna work. And then, I think, we should talk with Dorothy and as a committee about how we wanna approach these documents. This is just a fraction of the policy manual, and it's, you know, a couple hundred pages almost, I think. So, we should talk about the best way to do this. I think, you know, we have experience going through big documents and doing the budget and things like that, and giving ourselves homework to read, and coming back with like specific questions, stuff like that, or edits and things. So, we might wanna think about, if there's a way to do that here, to make the most efficient use of your time that we have you here, and obviously, the time of everyone around this table. So, I will hand it over to Dorothy.
All right. So, why can't I start by explaining how I usually approach the policy process, and a few tricks I found to make it be a little smoother?
Great.
And then, you know, you can adopt, adapt, you know, your procedures here. So, what I sent ahead of time was Sections one and two, or A and B. There, it goes through L, not through Z, so that should be a little heartening. What we did in the office was we took all the documents that we gathered from the district, and our, you know, in-house policy person matched our policy reference manual to your manual. So, what you have in front of you in Section A is, you'll see, if you look at the index, there'll be, there's two AA's. One is the Lynn version, one is the MAS C version. And that continues all the way through. You'll see places where she actually found that you had multiple versions of the same policy in different places. So, they're all there, too. What we usually do is just go policy by policy, and look at, you know, sometimes the policies match exactly, and then, we can say, keeping it? You know, it's still relevant, let's move on. Sometimes, there's differences in wording. Sometimes, that's just philosophical differences in wording, and it's not an issue, and you pick the wording you like the best. Sometimes, your policy may be a bit outdated compared to what we recommend based on changes in regulations. For example, in your Section A, there's a Corey policy. Our policy is background checks, and it incorporates fingerprinting. I didn't see any policy in your policy manual that incorporated the fingerprinting, so.
And we required that.
Carefully.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So, we wanna carefully get, you know, saying perhaps ours is the one to adopt there.
Yep.
So, we go through section by section like that. And what I do outside of the meeting is I keep the original version that you got sent, and a revised version that has, you know, that's tracking all the changes. When we're done with a section, the school committee as a whole, upon the recommendation of the policy subcommittee, would accept that recommend, would accept that section in form, meaning, we've done the work, it's all set. And as long as we're chugging through at a good pace, we would do that for the entire manual, section by section, approve in form. Then, at the end, the committee would accept, would adopt the policy manual, and rescind all prior versions. So, that's the point where all the policies that you've looked at become official. If there's something in the meantime that you say, no, this is important to do now, then, we do that, and it becomes the official version. But, in general, in the policy review, we kinda wait till the end to have you adopt the manual fully. Make sense?
Mm-hmm.
So, I, sending the sections ahead allows everyone to look at them, to formulate their questions, maybe ask questions of the administration. Gee, this policy, is this how it really works? Do we need to, you know, have some revisions of the policy? There may be times and sections where it's appropriate to have another administrator come in, perhaps the special education director, or the business person come in, and give some advice on the, you know, what they see as the best policy to have. There are also gonna be times, when we look at policy, we look at it as sort of the what and the why, the big picture. And there may be times when, in your policy manual, you have a lot of information that's actually procedural. It's up to you, but we often recommend that procedures stay in the hands of the administration, so that if there's a need to change sort of the rules and regulations under a policy, there's a little bit more flexibility to do that without having to go back and change the manual. Again, you know, that's a sort of a, the view that we take about policy, it may not be the view you take. So, that's something just to think about as we go through. I might say, gee, this has a lot of procedure in it, do you want it in there? One of the things I'd like to talk about tonight is just some simple, are there any conventions that you want to follow throughout the manual? For instance, pronouns. You know, are they he, she, or they, there, or, you know, whatever you decide you wanna use? How does the district name appear? How does the name of the school committee appear? So, any conventions like that, that you wanna make sure are followed from A to L? We can talk about tonight, too. So, that's an overview. Have I left any questions out there?
No.
No.
Okay. You're, okay, I didn't know whether that was, I have a question or not.
No.
And then presumably, tonight, we will schedule the next session.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
So, generally, you know, we leave a month to six weeks between sections, so everybody has time to kinda get the work done from the prior meeting and for the next meeting.
Mm-hmm. And we need enough time for you to send us the section, the next meeting sections?
Yes, yes.
With enough time.
Yes, I would fully expect that we're not gonna get all the way through A and B tonight. But certainly, once we're, I know we're into B, I'll be able to send C and D along.
Okay. All right, great. Anybody have questions? I mean, if we get to a point where there, you wanna make recommendations for, if there's clear answers about policies, and so, we don't need to go through each of them ahead of time, I think, we would, we could presumably read.
Okay, so if, so for instance, had I known that?
Yeah.
When I sent A, I could've said, really, you should just be looking at, say, eliminating the Corey one, taking the background check.
I would, do people agree with that? That we're okay, we're okay getting her recommendation, reading in advance, and letting her know if we don't think that recommendation is acceptable?
Okay.
Great.
Easy. Any thoughts, then, about conventions in the, of wording that you want? I'm assuming anytime that it's appropriate, that it's Lynn Public Schools and Lynn School Committee.
Yeah.
Yep.
I mean, I think to the extent that we make things plural and use they, there, that is something that people appreciate, I think.
Rather than he, she?
Right.
Yep, okay. That is how our reference manual, that's the standard in our reference manuals, so.
Great. Okay.
Okay.
Are there any other questions?
I just see something in here where there's school system versus school district referenced several times.
So.
Can we make a determination to just go with the MAS C school district?
Yeah, I don't feel strongly, whatever.
Yeah, we, a lot of our policies used to say school system, so if you had adopted our policies that were, that may not have changed in the past, I don't know how many years, but, we sorta looked at it and said, you know, if we, there's different types of districts, right? There's rural, there, there is regional, there's urban, there's. School district is always an appropriate term, school system isn't. So, anytime we had system, we just changed it to district, so, to sort of eliminate that. So, we can do that.
Great.
And if we, you know, as we're going through, if we find any others in the first couple sections, you know, we can say, oh, you know, let's make sure we do it that way. If we get to L, and we decide we wanna make changes back to A, that's a little bit more of a problem.
Yeah.
Just a question.
Yep.
So, it looks as though, in Section B, there's the school committee member resignation and removal from office, which is ours, yours doesn't have the removal from office. Say that we have to involve the city council because it involves the city charter. Is that something that we should look into, if that's something that we wanna change?
Yeah, yeah. If there are, there's always some local, you know, either town bylaws, town charter, city charter, things that might be particular to a district, and we've got, you know, something very basic.
Yeah.
But if you have something that needs to be different, then, you know, we would make sure that.
Do you have our charter to?
I don't believe we have the city charter.
Okay.
And that's old, too, I think that's some.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't usually, we usually ask for the school district documents, not the municipal documents.
So, but are you, is some, I think we would need somebody to be confirming that the policies we're adopting aren't conflicting with the city charter, right?
Yes.
So, maybe Attorney My House, you could work with MAS C to just confirm that there's no, nothing we're adopting that's gonna conflict with the city charter.
Any conflict with the charter?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that, I mean, there's not that many policies where it's going to be an issue, but, yeah.
But that was glaring to me when I saw that you didn't have it in yours, but then I realized, hey, maybe it's a, it's a local thing.
No, it's a good point.
Yep, okay.
Okay.
Get my red pen out. So, the first couple policies that are, there are differences on is AA. And this is really one where, any, you know, this is really one where we feel the policy should be there, and if there are any particular things that are unique to your municipality, you might want them in there. But there's really nothing that, that we have in ours that would, that is glaringly missing from yours. It's really, that's one of those more philosophical, the way you approached it, differences?
Can I, can I just, just so I'm following you, so AA is what we currently have.
Oh.
The back of it is the MAS C.
So, if you look on the bottom, if you look on the bottom of every document, there'll be the source. And if it says Lynn, it's yours.
Got it.
If it says MAS C, it's ours.
Thank you.
If it says both, they match. The other thing, when I go through and do the edits, I take out, I mean, to me, the source is information for us as we're going through it, so in the final edit, I would take out the source. And in general, the notes are notes for us, and would not be in the final policies. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay, so the legal references and cross references would stay, but the historical note would go?
Yes.
And the source would go?
Yes.
And this, and this note from the MAS C version is, is information purpose?
Yes. Yeah, the note in bold, yes, that's for informational purposes.
This is very informative. I like that they show us what, what they have as best practices and what we have. And it's, it's easy because it's all in order. You know, we can look and not have to define anything because you've already done it.
Right.
Especially with the Corey, she said it was in multiple places, the nondiscrimination was in multiple places. So, I think a good read of this would definitely help. And now that we have the basis, foundation, it should help in future meetings, so.
Definitely.
So, do you have any thoughts about which version of AA that you would want to adopt? Keep what you have?
You thought you were the government of schools, found the general laws in Massachusetts.
I mean, it doesn't seem like they're functionally different. I think ours references our charter. And so, I wouldn't see a reason to depart from it if there's no legal reason to do that.
No, there's no legal reason to depart from it.
Okay. Do any, does anybody else have thoughts?
I would like to see city when we're using it, rather than town.
Absolutely, absolutely. So, you like the Lynn one?
Right. Yeah, that's another one, when I'm trying to get everybody to change to municipality. Oh, okay. A lot of ours say town, just because there's way more towns, right? Municipality always works, so.
So, we're liking the mask one, not the?
The Lynn one, no.
Okay.
The Lynn one.
Yeah, I mean, and the note it says that this is, this would be more, potentially more relevant for a regional school district, if they had to specify who it pertains to. But for ours, it's pretty straightforward.
Yep.
I agree.
Okay, great.
AB was one where the two policies actually matched, except for the, the school system, school district. So, we can change where it says school system to school district.
Great.
And we'll be all set. AC is a little bit complicated. Let's see if I can spread them out in front of me, so I can talk. So, this may be one where I actually need some guidance from you, because the, the top one, in your, the top one, top two. First of all, the one that says Lynn, isn't updated to include pregnancy or pregnancy-related conditions, which is now a protected class that should be named.
Okay.
So, that update should be made. Also, the Lynn one did not have the, this, the sentence, if someone has a complaint or feels they have been discriminated against, et cetera, that last sentence of that's last paragraph.
Yep.
The other, the other difference was that, if you look at the MAS C, that last paragraph, it talks about nondiscrimination of students, staff, general public, and individuals with whom it does business. The Lynn policy only talks about students.
It says the committee's policy of nondiscrimination will extend to students, staff, the general public, and individuals.
That's the MAS C policy. Yours says every person ha, shall have the right to attend public schools.
Right above that, do you see the sentence?
Oh, got it, got it, got it, yes.
It looks like we just copied that and just had a space between the two.
Yeah.
So, this is ours, it has the same language, but it's just, it's a break between the two.
Yep.
Okay, so ours is missing pregnancies are protected class, and then, that last sentence.
Yes.
But for the most part, Jared, I'll tell you, ninety percent of it is identical.
Yeah, agreed.
Yes, it is. It's, it's just that last paragraph that.
Okay.
That differs.
Yeah. Are you okay with that?
Yeah, but obviously, I wanted to say Lynn Public Schools, not just public schools and whatnot.
Oh, yes, yep.
Great.
Yes. Thank you for pointing that out, in the very, the very beginning of the policy, correct? The very first words?
Yes. And then, the second sentence, the start of that?
Oh, and then, this is the, this is the other policies we had, the duplicate policies?
Yeah, well, so, the, the.
This is different.
The nondiscrimination was this, the AC dash R looks to me more like it's the procedure to follow should one feel they've been discriminated against.
I agree with that.
So, it's not really.
A policy.
Yeah, it's not really, sometimes, dash R is often means regulation or procedure, or dash E is exhibit. So, this might be a case where you feel like it should stay in there, or you feel like it could be, because it's a regulation, it would be not in the policy manual itself.
Do we, do we use this now?
The only thing I would say is, I don't think it should have the person's name like Director of Personnel.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
I think that the name should be eliminated, just use the title if we're gonna continue to use that.
Yep, that's a good point.
But the process, yes.
But the process.
This is what we use, okay. So, if we were to take this out of the policy manual, would we then have a regulations manual that would be a living document?
Well, generally, the regulations appear either in the staff handbook or the student handbooks, so it would be in there.
And those seem like they can be updated more frequently without our authorization. And with the ways laws change and whatnot, that might be beneficial to not have it in our policy.
That's generally exactly the reason why they're not in policy.
Okay, but do, would, so this would, this would go in a handbook, and we're, we're not responsible for approving the handbook?
Because it's a procedure. We have a policy that says that we're not gonna discriminate. Patrick puts together a procedure of how that's gonna take place.
How it's done.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I mean, I think it's important that we have this written down somewhere, this so that people know what their rights are and how to go about asserting them. So, obviously, if the fact that we can't approve it means that, and obviously, Dr. Tuck, I wouldn't do this, but some future superintendent could say, we're not gonna, Attorney My House.
The school committee approves what goes in the handbook.
Yeah.
He still would approve it.
Exactly.
If they, if he wanted to make some changes, he would come to us, approve it, but it would stay in the handbook.
It has, it has to fall within the law, though. You know, they can't just make up whatever, if the law requires it.
Right. But the law, some of the, the law's not gonna specify some of the things in here.
Is this in the student handbook now, do you know?
This is not in the, this is not in the student handbook, no.
It's a procedure to follow if the complaint is made.
If someone has a complaint or feels that they've been discriminated against because of their race, color, sex, gender identity, religious, national origin, sexual orientation, disability, pregnancy, or pregnancy-related conditions, their complaint should be registered to the Title IX compliance officer. So, that's what the law or our policy is, and then, in order to, I guess, do that, the nondiscrimination ACR is telling you exactly who the officer is and how to go about the complaint. And that should be, what if they wanna change it to a different person? Or, you know, I mean, there's just many things that the administration might wanna do, and we would have to do this again in order to change it.
But I think we have to do it again anyway if it's in the handbook. That's what Attorney My House was saying.
I've never seen the teacher's handbook that we, I don't know, I've never seen it.
This is my fifth year here, I don't recall whenever being brought before school committee to be approved. And there are procedures in the student handbook around discrimination, like Barbara Rayfus' name, for example, is not in the student handbook as a point of contact.
The only reason I'm asking is in the student, would it have to be in those places? Because on the nondiscrimination, it identifies, will extend to students, staff, the general public, individuals with whom we do business, so. Do we give that, like every time we do business with somebody, is that included in a packet?
Is this hung up somewhere?
By rule, there has to be nondiscrimination procedures in, in student handbooks, by law, I believe.
So, it's probably in there, you can check.
It is definitely in there. But I can tell you, and I don't have the steps committed to memory, but I can tell you that Barbara Rayfus' name is not.
Yeah.
It doesn't read exactly like this.
Yeah, okay.
Who is the District Office of Civil Rights?
Compliance?
Okay.
That'd be Charlie Gallo.
Yeah. But is that, does that, does he use that title, Office of Civil Rights?
No.
I think it's on Desi, who these, like.
The District Office of Civil Rights?
Number eight?
Yeah, I've never heard that. Any facet of our operation here referred to the Office of.
Oh, and this sounds like it's outside of the district.
Yeah, I think it's outside of the district, it's, you know.
It's an appeal.
You know, that would be, I would think, like the regional, you know, the state divided up into different districts.
U.S. Department of Education, Office for Civil Rights, five Post Office Square, Boston, Massachusetts, and it has, it has all the things there for appeal in it.
Okay.
I think that one of the important things to think about is if you leave it in the manual, and it changes, you have to change it every place, so that it's consistent every place you have it written down.
It says it was adopted December 11th, 2014, so, we have some people here. Yeah. Attorney My House.
It was adopted by the school committee, I mean, I get, any regulation that's espoused by the Office of Civil Rights, federal, a DOA, add it to your regulations, it sort of has to come before the school committee for approval. They recommend you're basically stuck doing it. You have an obligation to do it, because that's the law, but it has to still go before you.
Mostly, it was Maureen would come before us.
Right.
And tell us that they, we have to add something to our, to a different thing, and we would just vote on it to add things, yeah, to correct.
So, do you wanna keep it?
Yeah.
I don't mind either way.
Add this under the policy?
When.
It is in the policy.
We had wholesale revision of the student handbook.
No, I think, leaving it in the school committee.
We had up one conversation at a time.
When Cahill, there were mass revisions of the student handbook. They all came before the school committee for approval. One was when Dan Cahill was a member of the school committee, then, when Vinnie Fallon was a member, not, not Vinnie.
Tim.
Tim was a member of the school committee.
Which was before my time, so that's over twenty years.
Right.
Dan was about eighteen years ago.
Mr. Ford, what did you, you had a, did you have a question?
No, it's all set.
All right.
I would, I would suggest, if you're gonna leave it in, leave it as the dash R, and separate the policy from the regulation.
Okay, I'm, I'm fine with that. Others think? Okay.
Yeah.
Good?
No, I think it's, yeah.
All right.
In the first paragraph, then.
Okay.
We need to add pregnancy and pregnancy-related conditions.
Of course.
And in AC dash R, you have homelessness, and I don't believe that you have that. Um, and in AC dash R, you have homelessness, and I don't believe that you have that, um, in the AC. Generally, discrimination of homelessness, my understanding is it applies to students only. So if you have it, so you, um, now you're, have a policy that covers everybody where you've pointed out homelessness, but that only applies to students. So, and there are sections in the student section, there are policies in the student section that specifically cover homelessness and homelessness rights and so forth. So you might wanna take it out of here because it will be in the student section. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so I agree, we should take that out.
So I'm gonna add pregnancy and pregnancy-related conditions-
Mm-hmm.
And take out homelessness.
Okay, I mean, I don't particularly wanna discriminate against our homeless staff if we have, if we have them.
We're, we're given more rights than law requires, yeah.
That's why we-
But, yeah, I mean-
It's a policy, yeah, but, uh, I mean, if we wanna be consistent and-
But I, I think what she was saying, though, is if, if that's the case, remember, this is the procedure. We would need to add, add it to our policy, which is AC.
Right.
So we can add it, but Attorney My House, how do you feel with adding additional, uh, protected class people to our policy or groups?
What does statute say? That's what it refer back to, the statute demands-
The statute doesn't have homelessness in it.
Then it's- That's a decision that the school committee has to make, but I mean, you're adding more protective classes than what the law provides?
Mm-hmm, okay. Anybody else have?
Obviously.
I think it should be removed.
Okay.
It's a legislative body, probably did research, you know, that's why they made the law what the law is.
Yeah, yeah, all right.
Definitely protected in other sections.
And they, they are protected in another section, she said.
Right.
Absolutely.
Students, yeah.
So it should be removed, so no confusion.
Absolutely, there's a whole policy on protecting the rights of homeless students.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, sounds good.
Okay. Um, ACE is, um, E, usually when we see dash E, that's exhibit. Um, this looks to me like it's, um, summarizing the law as opposed to any specific LIN policy.
And it actually gives you the law that they're quoting?
Yeah, yeah. But, I mean, I read it in the, like, a high level. It's saying, "We know what the law is and we'll abide by the law."
Yeah, I don't mind keeping it, exac- cause it is an exhibit, I think, Jared, that's just referencing the law.
Yeah, okay, I don't mind either.
Then AC one puzzled us a little, um, because it was, um, we have a policy on sexual harassment, which was originally how this was coded, but it covers a lot more than sexual harassment, and it's got a lot of policy in it. So, and also it's not in your, we, um, we found it in the district handbook, and we weren't sure what the district handbook, whether that was a student handbook or a staff handbook. It's more current than the one we just talked about, um, and it was also, um, found in the student section, so a little bit puzzled about its origin and its-
Well, it talks about termination of employment, so I'm thinking that it does apply to, um-
Staff as well as students, yep.
Is this note written by you?
Yeah, that note was written, yeah, from the-
Or by MASC, yeah.
Yes.
Sorry, Attorney, sorry.
No, I was just saying that has to, uh, if you look on page six, um, paragraph D talks about termination of employment. Well, I think this is applicable to, uh, to our staff. And it, it really isn't just a policy, it's actually a procedure more so, too. It tells you what reporting, referral procedures. It kinda limits what we consider harassment, too. If you look at each paragraph, it is only four or five things, like gender identi- harassment, but it does say it's not limited to.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, so that saves it, it's a catch-off. So you don't see this in other districts?
I, no.
Okay.
No, certainly, you know, any policies about harassment, other than the sexual harassment, which is required, um, don't usually see it broken out into every single type with examples, and, um, this goes into a lot more detail.
Yeah, we would have to expand it each and every time there, there's a new type of-
There's a new protect, yeah.
Yeah, even though it says including, we're not limited to, I think it could make it harder, if it's not on the list, for somebody to identify a problem.
All members of the LIN school community must assess their conduct in the light of the following definitions of the various forms of harassment. If certain conduct is not previously listed but does fall into one of the following definitions of harassment, then the conduct shall be considered harassment and prohibited conduct. And who's to say, you know, if, um, the school district categorizes something as harassment as opposed to bullying, to try to get out of the, the bully law or, or the way that that's, that's done? Um, I think that the bullying law is specific and, you know, it could be a difference, but I think that harassment is, is bullying i- in a way. It, I don't know, it just, it's a law, it's six pages, and, um, I don't know if it's needed.
Dr. Teller, is this a procedure, the procedures, are these anything that are currently in use? Is this something that you guys are using?
So, uh, I'm looking at the district handbook, which is really a merger of student and adult, uh, policies and, and, uh, procedures, and pretty much what you see here lives in the district handbook a- as well.
Well, this was taken right from the district handbook.
So.
Okay.
Can we maybe have Mary look back to that date that's there and see if there was a rationale in the minutes?
Where's the, where's the date?
Um, December fourteenth, two thousand and fourteen, just, you know, mi- what was the rationale?
Where's the date?
There's no date on here.
Oh, oh, did I go too far?
You did, you went to the next page.
I'm sorry, okay, there is no date.
Yeah, there is no date.
No, there's no date on this one.
I think we should have dates on things, too.
Yes.
But I think because it's from the district handbook, it didn't, she, she was unaware if, if this is the policy or not. So the district handbook is probably not dated, and that's why there's no date.
Yes.
Could that be? Okay.
Yes, okay.
So is it MS, is it MASC's point of view that this is not a policy-
Right.
-document, and therefore it doesn't-
Right, that it's not a policy document, that the things that it covers are covered under places, and because there's so much procedure in it, um, and, you know, again, you want the policy to be broad enough and the procedures sort of underneath them.
Yeah. That, I mean, that makes sense to me. What are others? Yep, okay.
I mean, it could, if the, if the district handbook is, um, a handbook that applies to both students and staff, and it's in there, it doesn't necessarily need to reside in your policy manual.
Okay.
A- a- and I don't want people to think that we're, um, against harassment or, you know, obviously-
Or for harassment, right?
Right.
Yes.
You're definitely against-
Well, yeah, sorry, for harassment. Um, and, and, you know, all these things are horrendous and shouldn't be done in our, in our schools. Um, but I, I feel as though this is more of a procedure than a policy.
Yeah, I mean, getting, getting our policy has an order makes it better for everybody, I think. So I agree that it's not a substantive declaration.
So we would not put this in the policy manual?
Right.
So now we're to the December fourteenth, two thousand and fourteen. The nondiscrimination on the basis of sex, and that's another one where the only difference was that, um, between, was the school district versus school system.
Okay, that's good. So there was no difference to the sexual harassment, or we didn't have one?
You did not have one. Probably, perhaps.
Probably it was in this one.
It probably was in that one.
It was in there, yeah.
Yep.
Wh- wh- why is there a specific nondiscrimination policy for, on the basis of sex, if it's one of the protected classes?
Because of Title IX.
Okay.
I don't see any issues with, um, the one that they're suggesting that we adopt.
Nope. Agreed, okay.
So if you just look down where it says grievance officer, um, that would be where you would probably, like we were talking about before, put in the position, address and phone number.
I think Patrick should be the grievance officer. I'm joking. One more job added on. Uh, who do you think's appropriate for a posi-
I, I'm, where, I, I got lost.
We're on, um, the back page of AC AB. Should that be Charlie Gallow, the compliance? Or is this not really the compliance that he's?
The grievance officer.
It's, it says the superintendent or designee.
So that would usually be the Director of Human Res- yeah, Human Resources.
So we'll keep that, that as a Director of Human Resources, right? Is that good?
Yeah, cause it, that, we have it earlier-
Yeah.
That one, we took Barbara's name out.
Yep, which you said that the grievance officer would be the, uh, Director of HR.
Correct.
So I can take the information from the other policy for the phone number and so forth?
We, we're required to specify a name, is that, as opposed to a title?
No, a lot of districts just put a title.
So I think we should just put a title.
I mean, we have to take a vote every time that changes.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
And so one is handicap and one is dis- disability, right?
So now there's-
Wait, so for, for, on the sexual harassment, you're, you're saying for, on, on section, under complaint procedure number three, the designee is gonna be-
The Director of Personnel.
But, but can the grievance officer and the, the, the designee be the same person? Because it says, "After reviewing the record made by the grievance officer, the superintendent or designee may attempt to gather any evidence where necessary," which I think implies that it's two different people.
Right.
Oh, so maybe that's what I would, uh, so the grievance officer should be the personnel, and then it should just say the superintendent or designee maybe, and he can designate whoever he chooses to.
Okay.
Yeah, so you could leave in, I think what you're looking at, if you get down to number three on the second page-
Yeah.
Right.
It says superintendent, designee, you can just-
Cross the rest of that out.
Cross the rest out, and just leave it as designee may attempt.
Great.
And he could use one of his deputies or himself at that point.
Yep, yep, agreed.
And was that the, the big difference, is the, how we're naming handicap as opposed to?
Uh, just give me a second here, because this is another one where I think we have procedure. More than we want.
Excuse me, so you're good with AC AB?
Mm-hmm.
So there's three-
ACEs.
ACEs.
So we're just missing one on this sheet.
And so, and two of them are LIN, and one of them is AC.
So on the front sheet, Jared, there should be three ACEs, not two.
Yep, yep.
Yep. On the-
On this part.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's, there's three in the packet, but there's two on the index.
But at least two of them are identical.
Two of them are identical, um, I think there was a little bit of a difference, but I think it might have just been a typo, um, and a translation, that if you take the two nondiscrimination on the basis of, one says handicap and one says disability, the ones that are two pages with a lot of subheadings. In the first, under definition, the one that does not have the definition bolded is just missing a line, it's just missing part of a sentence. That's the only difference.
Okay, is there anything in this first policy that the other ones don't have?
In the, in the first short policy?
Yeah.
Just give me a second to remember what I read here. I, I think if you look at the, um, the two longer ones-
Yep.
They have more information about, um, the, the one that's the short talks about what must be done. The second one talks in more detail about the different types of modifications, um, and also, um, has information about the compliance coordinator. And you don't see in the short one.
I see in the C one, right?
Mm-hmm.
And I think this is like the previous one where they actually put the law in as an example. So I think this is, really is the example and not a policy, so that's why when it's AC dash E, I, I'm thinking it's, it's the example part. And the, um, do you see how it says, "Section 504, the Rehabilitation Act of nineteen seventy-three," says this? And then this is what the law is.
So the, so the short one is just a summary of the law.
Correct.
And the other goes into more of a detail.
So maybe-
So is, is your, and the, the, uh, there's three policies, the first one's a short one, two and three are the same except for the missing sentence in, in two.
Yeah, yeah.
So is it your recommendation that we do go with three as the policy?
That you go with, yes, that you go with the third?
The third, no.
The masked one?
Yes.
I think if we do that and we keep the other one that quotes the law, that it's changed to AC-
E dash E.
Yeah.
But why, why do we need the ACE?
We, we don't, but we, if we're gonna stay, like, consistent, like we have already done, by approving the example for the nondiscrimination, why not keep that as ACE dash E? Um, because that's really what it is. Or we don't have to keep it, either way, I don't-
That, that's fine, I mean, if that's an accurate description of the law, then there's no harm in restating it.
Uh, this part, ACE. This is the restatement of the law. I don't know, I didn't research, but we can double-check.
Okay, so then the ACE-
I mean, it's basically a summary of the law, right, yeah.
ACE would become ACE dash, it would become AC dash E, and then we-
Become ACE dash E.
ACE dash E.
Cause we already have an AC dash E.
Yep, and then we would strike the-
Second one.
Second ACE, and then the ACE, the third ACE is the new ACE.
Correct.
So just, um, in, in thinking about the, the coding of the policies, I think about it, the easiest way to think about it is like the Dewey Decimal System for policies. So certain policies have certain codings, it's the, um, National Education Policy Network system. Um, so, um, you know, I was, I was working with one policy manual, um, group, and, um, the policy subcommittee chair said, "So when we're all done, you'll put these all in order, right? And we'll just have AAA, man?" I'm like, "No, no, 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 that's not the way it works." Um, they've, you know, there's a, there's a, you know, A section is base, you know, uh, basic commitments, B section is, um, school committee, J is students, and then under that, you know, JA will be cer- a certain subject matter and so forth. So that's kinda, it sounds crazy, but that, if you think about it that way, I think it's easier to understand some of the coding.
Yep, that makes sense.
It looks like the next sections are all the same thing.
So AD, um, your policy is entitled education philosophy, ours is mission statement. This is a, this is an example of, we have a po- we think you should have a policy about your mission statement. We've given you a broad example, but the wording you definitely wanna have, specific to your district and the way you wanna have it. So this is one where I would say, "Look carefully at yours and think about it, what you want, much more carefully than you look at ours."
And we don't even have a date of when it was drafted. Is this something that you drafted, Patrick?
No.
Um, I mean, maybe we, you know, we just went through the strategic planning process as a district, which, uh, has some material that I would think would be helpful for this, but maybe this is one that we could put a, put a pin in because we, we do wanna probably pay attention to it. Um, and it doesn't feel like the same as the other ones where we're kinda going through it. And it doesn't feel like the same as the other ones where we're kind of going through administratively.
Yep, yep.
That's what I was thinking.
Okay.
Yeah, I think there's, you're going to run across a couple others as we go down through that are going to be the same, you're going to have the same opinion about.
The three, next three, you're right. The AD dash R and ADA are all similar. Like the goals, that, how is that a part of the policy if, if it's going to change?
Well, and-
Hold on, so for, for, for AD, we're just going to, we're going to keep what we have and then put it in our list of things to do to harmonize it with the strategic plan.
Okay, so you, you don't want to, obviously we don't want to adopt their mission statement because it's not applicable to what we are.
Right.
But we also need to come and revisit our current education philosoph- education, okay.
Yep.
And then the next one, which is the ADR, which is, I think, just like the one beforehand, which is the procedure wise, we probably don't want something like that in there. Does remember the discrimination part had the regulations? That is kind of like-
I mean, is this the Board of Education, so we're now on ADR. We talked about AD, we're now on ADR.
I think you might, to complicate things, you might want to look at ADA at the same time you're looking at these other two.
Yeah, it's all the same. No, we're not using that.
I mean, is it still true that the Board of Education has defined ten broad educational goals for school programs? Is that, no, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Ms. Gailey, yeah.
Every school has their own mission statement. Our district has a mission statement, don't we?
Yeah.
So-
Right.
Why do we have the educational philosophy in a mission statement? I think that we should-
We won't have a mission statement. We're just going to have, we're going to update the educational philosophy based off of our mission in our current district.
So I think what we're, there, there's multiple policies on this right now.
Yeah.
What we're saying is we're going to come back to this and work on harmonizing it with the strategic plan that we just did.
Okay.
But, but not just take MAS C policies. But that one, these ones will require more time for us to like actually think about and incorporate what we already approved for the strategic plan.
I just, Patrick, am I wrong? Or is it, in education, don't we use like mission statements versus policy? Like educational philosophy? I don't think that, I don't read that too often anymore.
Um-
Philosophies.
Mission, vision and core values tend to be the things that you see.
Can we change it to that?
We can change the title, yeah, but we're going to come back to it.
No, no, I just want to make sure that-
I would say, I would- Yeah, I would say ADA is one that is a Lynn policy. We don't have an analogous policy. I would say probably you might not want to have your goals in policy because you want to be able to, your goals change, right? You want to make sure you have a strategic plan, but embedding them in policy may be a bit more restrictive than you want to be thinking about them.
Okay, so then we would, so, Mr. Ford is, is asking if we would get rid of ADR. So I think an AD, AD dash A, so-
I would, because we did that with the other one.
Yeah, I think that's, that's fine with me. That makes sense to you guys. And then it's some, and some, and once we're done with this, at some point we'll come back to AD and then we'll take what we did in the strategic plan and incorporate it into AD.
So let me make sure I got it all.
Yep.
So getting rid of AD dash R, getting rid of ADA, coming back to AD.
Right.
Got it.
Is that, is everybody on board with that?
Yeah, Lynn AD, not mask AD, correct.
Yes, yes.
What are the two you're getting rid of?
AD dash R and ADA. Does MAS C have a policy for ADB?
Uh, no, we don't.
Okay.
And there's something that I don't like at the bottom of it, where it says that we've developed a list of area drug and alcohol counseling and rehab and reentry programs. Did, do we still have that?
Where do you see that?
At the last paragraph of-
ADB?
Yeah, ADB. Because I don't want to have something in there that we don't do.
That's a good point.
Yeah, no, we have an employee assistance plan.
And we have a list of the drug and alcohol counseling and all that stuff readily available?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, there's a card that HR get, would provide a person and contact information and they direct them in the, in the right direction.
I don't mind keeping that statement.
And I just ask, is, oh. Is marijuana included on this? I mean, it looks, what does, okay. It's all set.
Sort of the interesting thing, if you read through the policy, is it talks only about employees? Interesting. There is, in the employee section and in the student section, there are policies that address drugs and alcohol.
And I don't like that it talks about penalties, that, that's three to 10 years. What? We're going to keep them in the, the janitor clause for three to 10 years. Like, really, we can't do anything? But terminate them. But I, I don't, the more that I read it, I don't, I don't thi- I think it's a reiteration that we don't need.
Do we, do we have this information elsewhere in the HR document universe? About the resources for drug counseling and?
It's a good question, that I don't know.
Do we have an actual employee assistance administrator?
It's HR.
It's just HR, that's it, right? So there's no one qualified to really?
Not provide like a direct intervention. It's just, really the function is to hand the card to the person and this is the, where the resources are.
Is this, is this, would this be covered in other, like in people's contracts? In the, some of this, no?
It's actually considered a benefit. But I, I've not seen it explicitly written in.
Well, it doesn't talk about drugs, it talks about benefits. So fringe benefits, it talks about the Blue Cross Blue Shield. Doesn't really get into, to that.
Well, if this, if this isn't elsewhere and we think it has some good stuff, then I, and I would assume we'd want to keep it.
Didn't you say that this, it talks about it?
Yeah, it's definitely covered elsewhere.
It's covered elsewhere.
It's covered in the employee section for employees and it's covered in the student section for students.
Okay, well then, I don't, if it's covered elsewhere, then it doesn't seem to be the same category as the other policies.
It's, it's, I don't think it justifies having its own,
Right.
out of the blue, out of order type deal.
You agree?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can we just go back to ACE? Are we, do we want to keep it as handicap instead of disability? Because I don't know if that makes a difference these days. No? Do you see more districts designating the nondiscrimination on the basis of handicap? Or do you see it as disability?
The MAS C one is-
Disability.
Disability. I mean, it's the, it's the Americans with Disabilities Act.
That's true.
So we use that?
Yeah, did we, I think we adopted-
We adopted the MAS C version anyways.
Okay, good, so we'll keep it at disability.
Yeah. Okay. ADC.
ADC, two versions. This would be one where if I knew ahead of time, I would have said, I would suggest the MAS C version. It covers more than smoking. It covers tobacco products.
Great.
And it covered, you know, it obviously covers anyone who's on, on school grounds, not just employees and students.
Okay.
And it doesn't, but it doesn't go as further as talking about responsibilities of, of administration?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, the, I, that seems not like a policy to me.
Oh, I agree with you, yeah. I, I don't, I, I like the fact that it, it doesn't go that-
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, so I, I like the ADC version of, from you.
From MAS C.
Yeah.
So go with that one?
Others, I'm okay with that?
Yep.
Yep?
Patrick?
Do you think, do you think I should refer to, you know, a procedure? Because it looks like a lot of things in place of what's going to happen.
There are, this is again, there'll be something in the staff and in the student that gives some direction of what happens.
Great.
So what are we doing?
We're dropping-
We're going with the MAS C version for ADC.
If you look, actually, if you look down at the bottom where it says cross references, it tells you that there's two other policies. One is G, which is the staff section, and J is the student section, that refer to tobacco use for those two-
Great.
Groups of people.
Great. Okay, ADDA.
Okay, this is the one where, again, had I known, I would have, I would suggest. So this is what I often say to people. We try to keep policies brief, broad. When they're 10 pages long, it's generally because the state says you must have all these things in your policy.
Got it.
So, so this is one where, I believe the one that you want is background checks. The query policy that you have doesn't talk about fingerprinting. It just talks about queries.
Okay.
The background checks goes through everything that the state requires in a policy around the fingerprinting and so forth.
So, so right now, someone can challenge the fact that we're requiring fingerprints when it's not a policy?
Wow.
That's the law.
It's a law, though. I'm sure attorney in my house is ready to do this. Okay, so we're going to go with MAS C version of ADDA.
Yeah, and then A, the ADDA dash E dash one, information concerning the process in correcting a criminal record is actually incorporated in the background check.
Okay, so we'll drop that.
So you don't need that.
Good.
So we can remove that too.
Yes.
As is the ADDA dash R.
Hasn't?
Oh, so the, the rest of them are all in that one that we just-
I'm sorry, dash E dash two. And your, your ADD dash R. So the reason that we have the longer, the, the DCJIS model query policy is simply because when it, it's, it's verbatim, the state policy. It was simply, sometimes when policies are complicated or regulations are complicated and new, it just makes sense to put the regulations right in for ref, mostly for reference. They've been around long enough now. I think you could safely decide whether you wanted to have them in there or not.
You're saying the ADDA dash R?
Of the MAS C version.
The, for May 24th?
Yeah.
So six years ago, it was new. Now I don't think it is, I don't think we need it.
Yeah, I mean, this seems pretty routine. Anybody feel like they want it to stay in? We'll, we'll recap ADDA at the, when we conclude this section. Any, any, is any, is, are, do people have issues with dropping ADDAR?
No.
Okay.
I think we just need that first one.
So then we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven ADDA policies in the index. And where, where, what we're saying is, the MAS C version of ADDA-
Which is background check.
Which is background checks. Will replace and supersede all of those.
Correct.
So that's going to be the final. Great.
Yep.
Okay.
So the wellness policy, we have a model policy to show the types of things that should be included in a wellness policy. The wellness policy really should be created by your wellness committee. So this is one where your, what you've, the work you've done in your district policy is going to be more important than our model policy. Does that make sense?
This was approved in 2006, our policy.
Hmm?
No, that's the-
Huh?
That's the MAS C. We don't have a date on ours.
It says approved by the school committee, June 9th, 2006.
Where do you see that? Oh, okay, 69, okay, there's numbers. I see that now. It's right here.
Oh, yeah.
It looks different than all the other ones.
Okay. I mean, maybe someday we should, we should take another look at this because it's been 15 years, but I wouldn't see a reason to, to move away from this.
Right, there is a requirement, I believe, for the wellness committee to be looking at this more periodically than every-
14 years?
14 years, right.
Well, who's to say they haven't been looking at it all the time? It's not-
So they've been looking at it, they just haven't changed it.
It says, every two years, the coordinated school health program will conduct a Lynn youth risk behavior survey and analyze outcomes in nutrition and physical activity at grade five to 12.
Yeah.
We do that?
Yeah, absolutely. YRBS, absolutely.
Most districts do that, yeah.
Great.
And do we have a chairperson of the wellness policy committee?
It's Mike Geary.
And the distinguished member for-
Hey, speak up, man.
So you can verify that it's been reviewed regularly.
Absolutely, we do it every minute.
Okay, so we'll take, we're sticking with ADF, R ADF, right?
Yep.
The Lynn version?
The Lynn version.
And the last policy in the section matched.
Hmm, okay, perfect.
Cool. We accept responsibility for all facets.
The next packet is like nine pages long.
Okay, anybody else have questions on A or are we ready to move to B?
Can we just take a break?
Yes. We can take a, a quick recess. One at a time.
I don't remember, but can we, yeah, we do. He's getting a new kitchen.
Huh?
Patrick's getting a new kitchen. He's right now working on his favorite.
A crock pot, hands down. I got the-
What he just said.
Get me a crock pot.
I gave Brian a crock pot.
Oh, really? Game changer.
They are great.
This is game changer.
Isn't it?
This is game changer. Since I got chili on there right now.
I was going to say, I make a-
Just hanging out, right?
You just throw it all in there, pretty much.
I came by like two during lunch. I wasn't going to make lunch, so I kind of knew dinner's going to be good, so I popped in. All the ingredients are just literally bum, bum, bum. I did it the night before.
Oh, Michael's gone. Michael's never going to buy you that $700 from Germany.
I know, I didn't take-
He's got this one.
Everything is this.
He told us it does everything, but I said, you need to weigh more than a crock pot.
Right, just cook it in a low heat over a long period of time.
I know, that's it. Low, go, and go to work.
That's right.
Hello, man.
Dorothy, did you go to Marlboro today? The midwinter.
Was it like a drive-in? Shouldn't I get a drive-through, whatever they call them when they do the-
Uh, I've never been, actually. I, I don't know what they do there. Their, their midwinter half-day.
Lynn thing for, okay. Yes. Anybody hungry? We found some spicy rolls.
It was part of the 2004 policy. It was part of the two thousand and four policy.
Reese's over.
So this section is going to deal with board governance and operations. So this is about, this is where we may have some questions about how does the city charter work with.
Okay.
With what you have here. So in the first one, school committee operational goals, in the, before the numbers, it just looks like the difference is there's an opening paragraph in, in the MASC version which doesn't exist in Linn.
Oh, I see that.
It's, you know, you could look at it as a, sort of a philosophical statement.
What I like about ours, if I can talk, Jarrett.
Go ahead.
Is that, we're talking about communications to the public that it serves. I thi, I, I think that the operational goals on ours kinda match up to what we already approved. You know how we have the operational goal, Patrick, that we came up with, with you, actually? The protocols, operating protocols.
So the, the, the difference isn't just that paragraph, it, the.
Yeah, there is, I was just starting.
Oh, I see, okay, all right.
I was the only difference.
Please, continue.
I was just starting with that. So just to point out that it's in one and not the other, so.
Okay. What, so, you, you wanna summarize what the difference is?
So, and, and then, I, you know, you've, it looks like you've gotten some more specific in some of your goals and how it pertains to your work than the general ones that we have.
Got it.
So.
Okay.
And do, do you think it's rela, necessary to have our hours of operation?
I don't think so.
That's.
'Cause we don't even operate during those hours.
Mary, you're here?
We're here evenings.
But Mary is.
Oh, the, oh, the, oh, okay.
I think when I read that, it took me a second though to figure that out.
Does it even have summer hours in there too? Yeah, it does.
Should we mention that it's our secretary?
Well, I don't think that that's needed.
Yeah, I think I would.
But I think what Jarrett's looking at is the, this, I guess, the sub-paragraphs, one through five and one through four.
Right.
To see what we're, we're missing.
I'm just saying, yeah, I'm comparing what we say versus the MASC.
Yeah, you want my second one, so you don't have to keep flipping.
Thank you.
That's why I do it on only one side of the page. I would say that if yours are more specific to your committee and you're comfortable with them, that, those would be the ones to go with.
Okay, yeah, I don't see a reason to change, thank you.
I, I don't see a reason not to add the first paragraph, though.
Okay.
And then take out the hours.
Okay.
Just give me a second to make notes here.
So for policy B, yes, we, we would, the proposal is to take the first paragraph from the MASC version and add it to ours. And then for ours, in addition to that additional paragraph, we would strike the last paragraph between asterisks that has to do with the hours. Does anybody else have any comments?
No, but do we really need to strike it where it is in office that somebody just?
Well, we kinda have an agreement with Mary, with specific hours in it, so she's gonna be there. I, I just, I just thought it was not relevant.
Just remove it, okay.
I don't, I, I would think that if people wanted to know what the hours of the school department was, they would look elsewhere.
Yeah, not, yeah, not the policy handbook.
So B, A, A, the two policies matched, and you actually have in your manual the tool that you use for the evaluation.
You call, you call yours evaluating, we call ours evaluation, right?
No, there's, so if you look at the top, B, A, A, down at the bottom, the, the policy matches, that, that exhibit is your evaluating.
Okay.
Your tool, I guess, that you use for the evaluation. Do you regularly do it?
I find regularly.
Never?
Never.
On some, on a regular basis.
This, no.
John, tell me you do it. He goes home and he does. We definitely evaluate the superintendent.
We do get evaluated every election.
That's true.
That's true.
Every week, every day.
I have to tell you, a lot of committees look at this and say, we're supposed to do this? So, you might not be alone.
Oh, we're required to do this?
Well, because it's in your policy.
Oh.
Well, yes. Otherwise, you're not following your own policies.
Oh, so we can take. Do you participate in civic life?
Do, we don't, do, does it say in the policy how often we do it?
Generally, it says periodically or at a specified time, or, no, it does, most policies are very general. Some get specific and say, we'll do it once a year, we'll do it.
It was, they found it online, there's no date on what it was.
I mean, we, we did something, we obviously didn't follow this form, but we talked about how, how things are going at the last retreat we did.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think every retreat we do.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, the two that we've had.
Let's just change this to school committee, uh, school committee will go on retreat with MASC.
This is our Linn policy all this time.
Okay, well, if it's the same as the MASC, then I don't.
It's, I don't, I don't, is it the same?
I mean, generally, it says, you know, you'll look at different areas. It doesn't hold you to those areas, it suggests areas you might wanna look at. I mean, it's really quite general.
Okay.
And, but, and if this is not the tool you're using, then I would take it out of the policy manual.
You're talking about E?
Yeah.
Dash E.
So dash E is not an MASC policy?
Oh, no, no, this is yours.
Okay, just the B, A, A is the match. Okay. So that, I think that's where I was confused. So the, the actually evaluating, the school committee, is not an MASC policy, and I don't know where it came from.
So B, B double A, MASC and Linn are the same?
Yes.
B double A dash E is this Linn-specific tool that we don't, haven't used.
Yes.
To our knowledge. Okay.
And there's nothing that they offer that's similar, is.
Right.
Correct?
Right. So then, we.
That, no, not that's similar to this.
Right, so that we could just keep B double A as it is and then strike B double A dash E. People are okay with that?
How do you do that when it says in, in B, A, A, that you, concept of an evaluation?
Because, this is the specific tool that you use to evaluate?
Yeah.
This doesn't hold you to a specific tool. It just says you'll periodically evaluate, you know, do a self-evaluation, how are we doing, which you, I mean, you, actually, you did.
Right.
You're right. You've done it a couple times with MASC.
And I'm sure we'll do it again.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and we can do whatever we were gonna plan to do, as opposed to be bound by this specific tool.
Yes, yes.
No, we keep B double A, but we get rid of B double A dash E. What do people think about that, though?
Yeah, that sounds good.
And if you look at them, like, really, the committee, does the committee have a pre-print meeting agenda, or copies of the agenda distributed to committee members several days before the meeting? Like, this is a part of our expectations, and we have no control over that stuff?
No, we do.
It also asks, has the per capita financial amendment for instructional material been increased in the past five years? So we're doing pretty good on that, yeah.
Does the committee have or use a school committee library?
That's what I just said to Brian. I don't even know where it is.
Okay, so we're okay taking that out?
Yes.
Okay. All right, now we're on double B.
Double B.
Double B, so double B in looking at, you know, in looking at the two policies, you've made yours specific to.
Linn.
To Linn, so unless there's some wording that you wanna pull in from ours, I would say use yours.
Except for the public school system, right? We're taking, we're, we're gonna change it to words that we thought were better for the policies, right?
Which, are you looking at?
Um, Linn, the second sentence, it is governed, uh, it is the governing board of the public school district instead of public school system.
Oh, public, okay, yep.
I like ours, I think it does what it needs to do.
It specifically brings in the city.
Yes.
Yep, okay.
Yep, I would say.
Great. BBA.
So I believe the only difference in BBA between the two is in the MASC policy, there is the addition of the Personnel Matters, which talks specifically about the appointing authority on the superintendent and the other positions. As being within the power and duties of the committee.
And so, there's some reading in this, right? Under the Personnel Matters, second paragraph, the school committee shall appoint upon the recommendation of the superintendent, comma, right? And then it gets into all the positions that we have, say, in, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I think that that's important to have.
Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, that's what we in arguing. What, what's our rights on, we have the vote to appoint?
We, we voted for Felida.
Yeah, I think what this is doing is stating the current law under the mass statutes.
Yes, yes.
So, yeah, I mean, I'm, it, they're, they're similar except for that, that's a statement of laws, I don't think it's, I think it's probably actually helpful to be in there to keep us. Informed as to what that list is. But what do people think? The question is, the Linn one doesn't have those last two paragraphs and the MASC one does.
I think we should go with the MS, yeah, MASC.
Great, great, okay. MASC one for BBA.
All right.
Okay, BBA.
This is, again, one where there were just the very small differences in wording, the pronouns, his, her, is there, they, in our model policy. And in number six, you have to vote and act in committee impartially for the good of the city. Ours says for the good of the students.
We are the school committee.
Okay, yeah, I think that's right. Anybody else?
Are they have students?
Correct.
Students?
Yes, definitely.
Okay, so we make, keep this as is except for that change and then the there.
Yep, and the pronouns.
Okay. Triple B.
So this is one that's specific to you, but probably fits and you would want to have.
This is from our, this is information from our charter.
Yeah.
Okay, great. BBBA.
So you have.
Just one question, sorry.
Yeah, Attorney Siderway.
Jarrett, should we change it, the his and her to, to how we've been doing it to keep it consistent?
Yep, agreed.
In BBB?
In triple B, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Good catch.
We'll go through and, and try and make sure we catch all of those, if we've missed them tonight.
Okay. Yeah, that's a good point. Attorney, tell what.
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry, I thought you addressed me, I'm sorry.
I know. This is kinda contradictory.
Yeah.
Where are you looking?
PBBA, paragraph three, the members of the school committee serve without compensation. That's not how we do it now. It's a stipend, I think, but it's still something.
And it's actually been changed to a.
Oh, I see, okay, on yours, okay.
It's a pay?
It's why we pay taxes and.
Yep, we're treated as employees. Attorney Myhouse.
School committee doesn't receive compensation though. Receives, uh, uh. Stipend, but not, it's not the finest compensation. Okay, compensation, the city council has to vote in favor of it. There's never been a vote for, per se, compensation. This is just a repayment for the, your expenses in your capacity to the school committee.
No, John, it's, it's a salary, we.
I understand what the IRS has done.
Yeah.
But that's not the issue.
If it's just, if it's just the, if it's a repayment for expenses, then why are we paying taxes on it?
And why can some pay into the retirement fund?
You don't pay into the retirement fund.
Yes.
No, I do.
We're eligible to pay in the retirement fund and as well as get.
And I, and I'm eligible for benefits, I can get health insurance.
Eligible, you're eligible for benefits, I understand that. But this, statutorily, to receive compensation, it has to be an affirmative vote of the city council. There has never been such a vote.
Okay, so we need to get it as a vote?
But they just started taking taxes out.
They take it out, not just the taxes, they take out, like, I'm not eligible for the pension because I'm retired with a pension from the state.
Same thing with me.
Same thing as you, but we have to pay.
Taking taxes on everything, though.
They take that and they put it into something else and you would get it back.
The IRS definition is separate and apart, so it's talking about statutorily in the, in Commonwealth.
I think we should have John check into it further for better wording. Think so?
I, I mean, I don't, I think, there's, I don't see, I think we can just keep this policy as written, but I think we can have Attorney Myhouse look into the issue.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
Maybe have to take, revise it later on down the.
Based on what he finds, yeah.
After it's been checked, yeah.
Yep. Is that okay, Attorney Myhouse?
It's fine.
Great.
So we just have it as two different policies, they have it as one?
There, and there are other differences as well. In our, in the MASC version, it talks about the requirement for certain training that is now required by the state. The Ethics Commission, Conflict of Interest, Open Meeting Law. And it also has a statement about membership is not limited by a list of protected classes.
Those are definitely important to have.
Wait, so we're, we're comparing BBBA slash BBBB to.
To both, to your BBA, BA, and your BBBB. You have them out separate, we have them combined?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, I see.
But you don't actually write what the oath of office is.
No.
Verbatim.
No. I actually have not seen that before, but doesn't mean that you wouldn't wanna leave it in if you wanted to, but.
Yeah, 'cause we, we do take the, that class, you have to take this course.
Yep.
I think what she's talking about is more so the oath, that we have it word for word here, which we probably don't need it.
I'm talking about in here when she said.
Well, yeah, so.
You have to go.
So the, this lists the requirement that members have to receive the copy of the Open Meeting Law and that they have to go through the ethics training as part of our policy and also a non-discrimination on who serves.
So, if I can just, so Jarrett, like, if you look at paragraph two of ours, BBBA, and look at theirs, that language is at the bottom where it says, membership on a school committee is not limited to race, color, sex, religion.
Yeah.
The only thing that's missing is the political convictions. We can add it if we want to to theirs, but again, that's adding more than what the law requires. Servile of compensation, they don't mention, I don't believe, compensation in theirs, but that is something that we should definitely. Um, but that is something that we should definitely look into so we're, we're not taken away from future people that are on the committee. And then the whole teacher, superintendent, whatnot, is that part of yours too? That you can't be an employee of the school district to serve on the school committee?
No, it's not, but that actually is state law, that you can't be a teacher in the district.
So, um, we should, if we're gonna take theirs, we should definitely add that and, um.
What, what if we kept ours and then took that, uh, paragraph about the, uh.
Yeah, I think this is a case where you might want to blend.
Okay.
Where you might want to blend the two.
So, we would, we would keep ours and we would take the newly qualified committee members, the third paragraph of the MASC policy and add it to our BBBA.
And, and can we not have this school committee?
Third and fourth, third and fourth paragraph?
Why do we need the fourth?
No, that, 'cause because the fourth paragraph is already at number two in our.
Correct. Well.
Oh, maybe I'm looking at a different.
The fourth paragraph is this, Jared, 'cause there's one, two.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, all right.
So.
Yeah, so we add the fourth, third and fourth paragraph.
Third and fourth.
Yep.
And what about the oath? Do you still want to keep the oath in or do you want to just take the language that they have here that talks about that prior to entering office, we have to take the oath?
I, I don't have strong feelings about that.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I think maybe you want to just hold on these two sections.
Yeah.
Compare your charter to it.
Okay.
Because they're going in different directions than the charter.
Okay.
It's where the charter goes, those qualifications.
Could you, Attorney Myhouse, please review the charter and make a recommendation with respect to these policies? So, we're gonna, we're gonna put a pin on BBBA, BBBA slash BBBB, and BBBB, so it's three. This may come up in the next several policies, I think.
We're gonna have the, just charter reviewed by Attorney Myhouse and then we'll go from there, the next.
Yep, exactly.
And the city charter is from nineteen seventy-three, so, uh, when I said it was from the eighties, I was wrong, sorry.
Can we reflect the record?
I was wrong. My wife would love to.
Did you hear that, honey?
So, the BBBC, um, the MASC policy is very short, is really just what the law says about resignations.
Really short, two paragraphs.
But this, but we should, we need to check with the charter on this.
Gonna check with the charter.
Yeah, 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 same, same.
Which covers removal as well, so, yes.
So, we'll change, same with BBBBC, BBBD.
Just a question too on BBBC. Um, the third paragraph just says, "Established by law," no period. Like, is there more that we're missing to the MASC policy?
No, no.
So, it should be a period?
Um, huh.
He's like that.
Say it on any of the other ones where it said, "Established by law." I will check that out. It is a statement that is on certain policies that aren't established by law.
So, we're holding all of these?
Okay, same with BBBE. I mean, this one explicitly references the city charter.
Yep.
Okay.
Or for John, right?
Yep.
N B?
Yep. Now, we're on the second page.
All right, so, from BBBA to BBBE, we're gonna come back to based on Attorney Myhouse's review of the charter.
So, the, uh, BBE, B, triple B E, the unexpired term fulfillment, also hold?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, we're back to better words, BCA.
BCA.
All right, BCA.
So, BCA, um, the school committee member ethics, our version, is, um, something that was established by, um, MASC in sixty-four. It's just, a lot of committees have it verbatim in their policy. It looks like you've got really most of it, um, just maybe structure it a different way.
Yeah, it looks like it's just run on sentences.
Yeah.
Literally, if you look at every word.
Yeah, where it is.
Yeah, it's really just, it's really just the formatting that's different.
What's that?
I sort of like the MASC version.
I like the format. It's a little bit more clear and, yeah, I like the way it reads.
That's what we get when they send us the, you know, the whole calendar there, so.
Okay.
It's in the back of the calendar.
So, for BCA, we'll take the MASC version?
It's the same content, but just different, uh, setup, so it's not like we're changing much.
BCB. MASC doesn't have a policy for BCB?
No, no, we don't. This looks somewhat specific.
Could be a charter.
Meaning certain, yeah, it could be a charter. Um, the legal references are, mess under law, legal references.
But it does say, "A violation of any provision of this section shall run of the contract in respect to which such violation occurs voidable at the option of the city." So, it kind of seems like the city's somewhat involved.
Mm-huh.
Then it also talks about imprisonment and fines. You know what this is?
Where are you reading?
Uh, where are BCB, "The school committee conflict of interest." This really reminds me of the ethics we had to take a couple of years ago about contracts.
Let me look into that because I know there's some charter, uh, language.
Yeah, it's got some pretty, pretty specific things about stock ownership and so forth that's certainly not in law. So, it's probably in the charter.
Okay, BCB is under review.
Yours is much larger than the next one.
BDA.
So, I generally, um, suggest that school committees think out a little bit what they, make sure that they've, have enough clarity in this policy about how their organizational meeting is run so there are no questions that come up. You know, who opens the meeting and so forth.
I mean, the MASC version wouldn't apply to us because it provides for the nomination of a chair.
Right, right.
What do you mean by that, Jared?
By statute, the mayor is the chair.
Statute is elect, right, the mayor.
That is correct.
So, so, we wouldn't be electing.
Yeah.
In the MASC version.
Yeah, so, yours is probably the, it's probably totally appropriate.
Great.
I just, what if everyone's new to the school committee besides the mayor? That's why I, I, when I was reading it, it seemed, seemed a little bit better 'cause as she was explaining, it's, it's best to have this spelt out as, as much as possible, but you're right about the chair.
I think in the scenario where there's six new school committee members, that they can interpret senior to go by age.
Why did you look at John when you said that?
I didn't.
Where's the age harassment policy?
It's a distinguished.
So, so let me ask you a question. Do you, so, what are, what are your procedures then for the vice chair? Is that an election?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, do you want to, um.
Put number two of yours on to ours? That's basically, that's, that's exactly what it is upon election. And we, we could take out new and just say, "Upon election, the chair will preside." There's no need to say new chair.
Yeah.
But also it says, "And clerk," we don't really have clerk, we don't elect a clerk at that.
You could just take ours, instead of senior member, you could just say mayor.
Right.
But, I mean, I guess the purpose, yeah, the purpose is he isn't there. I mean.
Yeah, the mayor, yeah.
But I, I think that.
I, I guess I would, the, I mean, the, what you have is fine. I guess I would add how the vice chair is chosen.
It's chosen, that's what I was about to say, yeah.
Oh, by a majority.
Yep.
So, put number two on ours.
Well, I, I would say, um, the vice chair will be elected by a majority roll call vote of the members present in voting.
Great.
If, um, if no nominee receives a majority vote, the election will be declared null and void and nominations will, will be reopened. I think that is good language to have in ours.
Yep, that sounds good.
So, let me make sure that I get it right, right? So, take what you have as the first paragraph.
Mm-hmm.
The second paragraph is number one of the MASC version.
For vice chair instead of chair.
But, yes, yes, but number one, not number two. Okay, that's what I was getting at.
So, the first is, the first paragraph is the same and the second paragraph will say, "Nominations for the office of vice chair will be made from the floor," yeah, okay. Everybody good with that?
What is the last paragraph of yours specified to about vacancies?
So, suppose the vice chair resigns, then that office becomes vacant.
And then we would do the same process at a later time, not on that first Monday?
Right.
That makes sense. Do we, I don't think we have anything like that in the policy. We don't want to be without a vice chair if Donna was to resign, right?
Very true.
Can, can we have that language?
Yep, that, yeah, we can take the last paragraph as well and add it to our.
Number two? And make it number two? Or do you think it needs, are you just separate?
I don't think it needs to number, yeah.
I don't think you need to number the paragraphs.
Correct, yeah.
I wouldn't number them.
Perfect.
Great. Are we good on BDA?
Correct.
Great. BDB.
Mary, are you good with BDA? I don't think that we.
So, we don't have a policy for this?
This is your policy, the school committee officers, that's yours.
It says MASC.
EDB?
Yeah.
No, it doesn't, it says Lynn.
Lynn.
Yeah, there's two.
On the back.
EDB.
See?
Maybe you go with the next one, maybe.
Okay.
But one of the things we definitely don't do is, we don't elect the vice chairperson annually. We do it every election.
Where are you looking?
Um, it's the first paragraph, uh, second sentence, I mean, third sentence, on ours.
Oh, on, okay.
So, what, what did you see as the differences between ours and MASC?
Um, for, for one thing, I think we probably talked about officers. It sounds like you don't have. We talk about a clerk, right?
It's weird, 'cause other, other smaller districts have clerks too. That's like a secretary though, right?
It's more, I, I mean, if you look at it, it says, "The clerk will keep or cause to be kept." It's, I don't really, I mean, you have, and in any place that has a clerk, they also have someone who's taking the minutes, right? There, so they're.
Right, 'cause this title is not, this title is Mary's title, but actually Nancy does all of our.
Right. I mean, a lot of times they elect a clerk, but the clerk basically has no responsibilities beyond what all the members without a title have. Did I say that well? So, basically, they would have a chair and a vice chair, they would elect a clerk, but that clerk would never have any, sort of the third person in line if the chair and the vice chair aren't there or something.
I remember this. So, my. Do you remember when we were putting the description together for the secretary of the school committee?
Yeah, we did a job description and then we did a contract.
And, and we did it from here. If you look at a lot of the stuff, the, um, you see how paragraph four talks about the secretary of the school committee?
Mm-hmm.
And then the job description and qualifications and salary?
Do you, was there anything in the MASC policy that you thought was missing from our policy?
No, no. I guess my question would be, you call the school committee officers and it talks a lot about the secretary, who's really not an officer of the school committee.
That's what I thought was, was weird too. And these are all her powers, "The secretary shall supervise all print and required by the school committee." Do you remember this? We were joking about it.
What is Nancy's title? Nancy, do you have a title?
Nan.
Stenographer.
So, I, I think that if we're gonna keep ours, we should at least correct the fact that the vice chairperson is elected, um, on our first meeting after the election. And that it's not, uh, annually, 'cause that's not how we've been doing it. Um, and we might not need all this, uh, um, secretary of the school committee or let's add it to a, a different section altogether. Why have it in, in the officers if it's not the purpose?
It looks to me, sorry, it looks to me more like the job description of the secretary of the school committee than it does the officers.
We use this for the job description of the school.
Attorney Myhouse.
This is basically a historical position. If you go back in the history of the school committee, it used to be superintendent and with three deputies. One deputy secondary, one deputy elementary, third deputy was the secretary of the school committee. And that's basically the description of the position within the framework of the, of this, uh, section. That went out of effect when Al Breznerhand.
Right.
Retired, that ended the secretary of the school committee. That was back in nineteen ninety, nineteen ninety-one, ninety-four maybe. So, I think that's a job defin, the definition of that job, not the way it is currently set up.
Okay, so we could revise this policy to, I mean, I think we can just strike the third sentence about election of the vice chair, 'cause we have that covered in another policy.
What are we talking about?
The vice chair.
In policy BDB, the third sentence, "The vice chairperson shall be elected annually at the meeting for the organization." We can strike that because we have another policy that speaks to it.
Where's the other policy?
In front of us.
The.
The one about elect.
The one we talked about.
Oh, okay.
Organizational meetings.
Yes.
And then we would take out the secretary sections of this policy because it's covered by the secretary's job description and employment contract.
Is that fine? John, is that fine to take out?
It's fine.
Okay.
As I stated, the secretary of the school committee was a deputy superintendent. That job was eliminated a long time ago.
But we are in a charge of hiring the secretary of this, for the school committee. So, the next paragraph, uh, sentence is, "Superintendent of schools and the secretary for the school committee shall be elected at any time that vacancies shall occur." Do you think that that is not necessary because?
Sorry, where, where are you?
It's just right after when we, 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 um, you just said that we were gonna strike that vice chair, it's right after that.
Yeah, um.
If we do, we need to change all those things like one through four, 'cause those are not the duties and put in the duties that we, that we did when we posted the job.
Well, the only offices are the, the chair and the vice chair. That's, that's what I'm, I'm stuck on.
Yeah, that's, I'm kind of stuck on that too.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Statutorily, there's a position known as secretary of the school committee, which gives the authority to the school committee to appoint. That's by statute.
And aren't we referencing that statute in the new policy we just adopted on, uh, the school committee's hiring, sorry?
Jared, I think if we go to BDC, which is the next one, appointed committee officials, this is where we should have things about Mary's position, 'cause these are positions that are appointed, correct? Oh, yeah, and it talks about the superintendent, again, being appointed by us.
Jared, shall be elected by the committee.
So, should we be adding the secretary of the school committee? So, should we be adding the secretary of the school committee to that section, then?
I mean, that, to me, that makes sense, if you look at the MASC version, it's talking about the duties of, the duties of the chair and vice chair, I would scratch clerk, right? Which are absent from your BDB. And then, a lot of the stuff that's in your BDB could be in BDC, because those are the appointed.
About the secretary?
Yeah, yeah, because those are, those are positions that are appointed by you, the school committee.
So, I think that we'll need to see these again, uh, but the edit would be to take the secretary provisions and move them from BDB to BDC.
Yep.
That makes more sense, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Yeah, and then, and then, um, on the MASC version, strike the clerk?
Yeah, because we don't have one.
Right, because you don't have one.
And we don't want to, we don't want to have, create this.
Are we, are we, are we-
Well, that's what I'm getting to. Do you want a, a policy in there that delineates the duties of the chair and the vice chair? As officers of the committee?
I would say, yeah, we would need that.
Okay.
But, do we want, we don't want to create a position of clerk, correct?
Correct.
Right, you don't-
So, you, so you would add the, minus the clerk section, you would add the duties of the chair and the vice chair to our BDB?
Yes. Yes. I, I, it sounds like I'm taking pieces of both policies-
Yeah.
To create one policy that just talks about the officers of the school committee, and another policy that talks about the appointed committee officials.
Because that first paragraph is already in MASC, so it talks about the chairperson, if they're not there, the vice chairperson takes over, and that's what it says in theirs. It says, "The vice chair of the committee will act." So, I don't think that we need the beginning part of our BDB anywhere, because it's already in their BDB. But, I think that we need to move anything that involves the secretary of the school committee in this section to BDC. And then, that resolves all the issues with regards to BDB.
Yeah, and I would say that it, these are, that, those are enough changes, that would probably make sense for us to take another look at your-
Yes, yeah, so, when I make these changes, I'll send to Mary the redline version.
Great.
And so, you'll have, absolutely have a chance to say, "Hey, Dorothy, that's totally not what we meant."
Beautiful.
Hopefully, I'll get it right, but-
That sounds great. All right. Unless anybody got anything else on those, BDD?
This is all being moved to BDB.
And this, yeah, this is one of the ones that have an R, has an R.
So, now we're on BDD, right?
Correct, unless somebody else had something?
No, BDC, we already, already worked on, yeah.
What, what did you see as the differences between our and MASC, ours and MASC?
So, I think, um, I think the, the gist is the same. I think it's more the, the way the wordings happen, or you know, the way they're worded, that I see as differences.
I, I see it as a tug of war of, of what responsibilities and, and obligations are, are we are. If you look at their first, our first sentence, it says that we believe our most important function is policies, and then theirs says that we're going to leave it up to the superintendent, uh, with regards to all matters of decisions and administr- administration that comes within their scope of executive officer and all that stuff.
So, ours is a little bit more explicit in saying, because then the next sentence talks about policy ultimately belonging to-
Yes.
So, it's, it's a little bit more explicit in, in defining policy belongs to the school committee, administration belongs to the superintendent.
Dr. Tewa, do you have any viewpoints on?
I mean, uh, that agrees with our operating protocols also, right? I think we're pretty explicit about it, about it there.
But, as between these, the two.
You know, I, I could see sort of a blending of some of the wording, um, to-
Okay, well, I mean, anybody else have thoughts on this one? You let the MASC one?
I can't hear.
Others, what, oh, we're, we're just, we, we haven't made a decision yet, we're just talking about, we're comparing it to.
Um, I, I see a lot of similarities between the two. I was in here when this was created, so I'm not sure if it was, you know, different administrations have, you know, call, call for different, um, pushback from, from them, and we're stuck with this. I, I think that they both pretty much say the same thing, but like, um, we were just talking about, it's like in different orders. We both agree that policymaking is important, and it's what we do, I see that in, in both of them. Uh, it talks about the superintendent coming to us for guidance, and us going to him for guidance, um, you know what I mean, so?
Is it the all matters piece? I think the language, "all matters," does that make, is, is the language that they're using?
Where do you see that?
Or, um, MASC, the committee will leave to the superintendent, "all matters of decision." Is that something that, could you get translated differently? Is that something that you feel like could cause a little bit more?
Um, I think that it, "all matters of decision" in administration that comes within their scope of executive officer or as professional leader of the school districts. I, I don't think that that entails policy, I think that we would look to him for when we were discussing a change to policy, but that wouldn't be in his, his purview or scope with, as executive officer. You know, he has a lot of power, because we're, we don't have any power individually, but as superintendent, you know, he has the power to, to enforce our policies. We can only make policies if we have a majority of the people to agree to it.
I guess the, the one difference that I'm seeing, maybe I just haven't seen it in the MASC version, but the last paragraph of the Lynn version talks about keeping the school committee informed and notifying promptly about emergency issues, which doesn't appear to be in the, be in the MASC version.
I agree with you, and that's what I, what I liked about ours, I was, I was leaning more towards keeping ours, just because of, of it, and I was trying to justify that with the fact that a lot of the language in the MASCs is, is in here, it's in somewhat of a fashion.
Yeah, I think it's just, it's basically saying the same thing, it's just phrased, just phrased differently. The only- The only statement that I see specifically, clearly in MASC, that's not in the, um, in your version, is, um, the piece about budget or expenditures, expenditures of funds.
Yeah.
Why wouldn't we just add that-
To the first sentence?
The superintendent shall inform the school committee promptly and possible happenings in emergency nature. Add that to the MASC one.
And then, and then we'll keep what Dorothy was just saying about reserves, to itself, the ultimate decision of all matters concerning general policy and expenditures of funds.
Right.
We could just take our last, but add it to the MASCs.
That's what, that's what he was saying, but I thought you were saying something opposite.
No, no, same thing, because I, I kind of like theirs even, too.
No, I, I agree that that, that language should be crossed over.
Okay, so then for BDD, we'd be starting with the MASC version, and then taking, inserting the last paragraph of the Lynn version to the new version.
And changing his or her to?
Is that, is that good with everybody?
Yeah.
Can I just hold, um, so then there's a couple places, are you saying the last paragraph or the last sentence?
Last sentence.
Last sentence.
The last sentence, not the whole last paragraph.
Okay, last sentence.
Yeah, because then you're talking about policy a couple of times.
Okay, last sentence, then.
But I thought we were talking about keeping informed.
Informed about the school operations is-
Yes.
Yep.
Is, is in the first sentence, though, of that paragraph.
Yeah, that's why we would think in the paragraph.
What if, what if we said, what if we revised that first sentence to say, "The school committee holds the superintendent responsible for keeping the school committee informed about school operations?"
Oh, got it, yep.
And then took that last sentence.
Perfect.
So-
Okay, got it, got it, got it.
The new plan is to take the MASC version, insert the last paragraph of the Lynn version with the, uh, following phrase, strike from the first sentence of that last paragraph, carrying out the policies within established guidelines, and?
Yep, can I just add one clarification, because of the pronouns? In the effort to keep the school committee informed, rather than in their effort?
Yes, that's fine.
Yep. So, we had, uh, iron sin, we were expecting to try to keep this to two hours, which we are at the end of. Yeah, time flies when you're having fun.
If I may, Jared?
Yes.
The last thing goes with the one we just went over, can we just get that one done, and then we can?
The BDR, sure, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Just let, give me one second here to finish writing my notes, okay.
They don't have one for example?
This is Lynn specific.
Yep.
What can I add now? BDD dash R.
Do we need that?
It sounds like it was written in a very tough time for them.
Honestly.
So, and just the note on the bottom, it's in your online manual, but was not in the materials that were provided to us, so it's not consistently everywhere.
Okay. I, I mean, unless, unless someone has a reason for wanting to, I mean, Dr. Tewa, do you feel like it's necessary? Okay.
I mean, I mean, there's a couple of them that, yeah.
Hold on, you, you are not granted flexibility in your schedule of time to compensate for the excessive, numerous, and excessively long evening meetings. Brian, this was, they foreseen us getting on the committee.
I certainly think you have the right to appreciation of your work, and it's carried on to consciousness.
R S P E C T. There we go.
So, is this, is this an elimination?
I think so. Unless anybody wants to argue for it, to keep it.
No, I'm not arguing.
He or she has a right to protection from fear of unreasonable termination, this is nuts.
All right, before we go, we should schedule the next meeting, right?
Yes, we absolutely should, can I, just let me go grab my-
Yes, definitely.
So, is that net?
Uh, we are taking out BDR. We haven't got the BDE yet. But tonight.
In no motions?
Nope, we're going to pick a-
No, we're, we're continuing, yeah.
Continue.
Not yet, we're picking a next date. Are we going to try to keep it on Thursday? We don't have a school committee meeting?
Uh, that's fine with me, what, what-
I forgot my calendar. Well, I'll do my best to remember what it says.
Okay, well, we can, I mean, we can adjust it, obviously, you are integral.
I think it'd be a good idea if we kept with the Thursdays, because we don't have any negotiations on Thursdays.
We do, we have, um, we have it on the sixth.
So, I guess, my, my first question is, do you think that we, we have-
Oh, it's off?
B or do you think we'll need to go through, I need another chapter for this?
Well, I can certainly get C to you.
Okay.
Um, in case we chug through B.
Okay, and that's already ready, you don't, we don't need to give you enough, I was going to say, do you need more time to get C ready?
I believe C is ready.
Okay.
So, then we could do the sixth or the twentieth for the Thursdays in February.
Is the tw- the sixth, I know I'm busy, is the twentieth a school vacation week? Which I know I'm not busy, so if you guys are, you know, open to it, I'm certainly open.
Anybody not available on school vacation week?
No, I'm around on school vacation week.
I'm around.
Dr. Tewa?
No, me, no, I am available.
You're available. Okay, want to go with that?
The twentieth is good for everybody?
Yeah.
All right. February twentieth.
Wait, Mary, is that good for you?
I have, I can change whatever it is, don't worry.
Oh, do we have plans?
You can invite whoever to the meeting.
Tell me you almost got-
Ian, you okay?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, so next, next time-
I just don't want to be setting precedent for negotiations to be happening on vacation weeks.
Well, we can bring that up as a policy.
John wanted to say something.
Oh, yeah, here in my eyes.
We were just saying that it's always been the practice not to schedule anything during school vacation weeks. It's always been the policy of the, uh, past.
Isn't that just, because if there were things on the agenda that were, that people felt like they needed to be here for, whether it's employees or parents?
You, you can change it, I'm just saying, that's always been-
I mean, they also have, we also haven't done this in forty years, so-
Yeah, exactly.
Unprecedented as a committee. I mean, I, if, if somebody has plans, I'm happy not to, to do it later, honestly, I, I didn't-
I, I just, my wife thinks that I work enough, but, and now I'm going to be going, you know, I don't know what she has planned for that week.
Okay, do you want to not do it on vacation?
Let's go back.
Sorry.
So, March fifth, can people do March fifth?
Will not be in the country.
Will not be.
Really?
I know I, I know I'm busy on that date, too.
Okay, good.
March nineteenth, then?
I won't be in the country.
No.
Yeah, I don't know, I'll be in the country.
No, it's, it's the Friday, the thirteenth.
St. Patrick's Day is on the seventeenth. Come on, Sean.
Yeah, but they don't have-
It's a high holy day, you should know when St. Patrick's Day is.
I know when St. Patrick's Day is. Drink seven days before it comes to pass. I know when it was.
I, I'm fine with that date in March.
I think the friendly nights thing would probably be on the twelfth.
It's the, it's the thirteenth.
On the thirteenth.
How do you know that already?
They're ahead of us.
Five sources.
I have. I love it.
So, we're doing it the nineteenth?
All right, the nineteenth.
You'll have to proceed without me, because that's the final Schusterman Foundation convening. I can send Kim in our stead, but Deb and I will be gone.
Well, we can see Kim. Kim will be thrilled.
Six P M.
And don't forget, you have to let her out earlier that week for the excessive late night meeting. This is like opening Pandora's box, it's crazy.
I mean, this is, this is, this is a fairly long gap, and we have to get through L, so we should try to do as much as we can on our, on our own and come with recommendations, so that we can-
Yeah, I will, I will definitely, starting, yeah, starting with BDE.
Yeah.
I'll go through and, um, give, you know, where there's-
Which day of the week is it?
Thursday.
Differences, give you some thoughts.
And what the extra time, will you try to get more than C two, or is that not possible before?
I, well, do you, I can send D two, I believe that we've, we've done, in the office, I believe we're done through D.
Okay.
So, I can get it to you, yes. Do you want me to send it soon, or do you want me to?
Soon.
Okay, I, I can send it right away, most likely, but, but I won't be able to have my thoughts yet.
I, I would wait till you had your comments.
Okay, okay.
If you can get it before the vacation week, that'd be good, because at least we'll have something.
I'll do my best. Well, that's still a month.
Yeah.
Vacation week is still a month until we, almost until we meet again, right?
But, if we have your-
If I can't do it before vacation week, I'm sure I would be able to get it during vacation week.
Okay.
Okay, but, and we, we have your comments ahead of time, presumably we'll go faster through, and, because we're going to have to, uh, increase the pace.
There's a reason why we bill over three years, sometimes it takes that long.
All right.
We're go-getters.
Yeah, you clearly are, this was great.
Thank you.
We got one, we're coming on the committee, right?
Motion to adjourn.
All right, may it second it.